Good evening. I now call to order the York County Regular School Board Meeting for September 27th, 2021. Well, the first day of fall was last Wednesday, and we are now quickly approaching our second month of school. We would like to applaud our teachers, staff, families, and students for their support as we all remain committed to providing a high-quality instruction for all students. The mission of the York County School Division is to engage all students in acquiring the skills and knowledge needed to make productive contributions in the world. As a reminder about citizen comments, all those wishing to address the board must sign up prior to the start of the business portion of the meeting. To ensure that staff members presenting tonight and all those wishing to make public comment can be heard and are allotted their full timeframe, no outbursts, applause, or disruptions will be permitted during the meeting. Should this rule be disregarded, I will provide one warning, and further disruption will result in the room being cleared. I would like to share some information regarding our pledge leader this evening, Kyra Hagan. Kyra is a proud Seaford Bulldog and a model citizen. Upon entering the building each day, she takes the time to greet every teacher and staff member by name as she walks to her classroom. She loves being a student at Seaford because she has a lot of friends. The teachers are nice, and she always feels safe, respected, and relaxed. Kyra is very happy to be back in school because she loves to learn. Her favorite subjects are writing and reading, but she will tell you that every subject is great. Kyra believes that it is important to work hard and always do your best. Kyra is passionate about writing and aspires to be a writer when she grows up. Her goal is to travel the world and write about her adventures, particularly in Egypt, China, and the jungle. I can't wait to read about them. Her advice to the world is to always be honest, kind, and help others. Please stand as Kyra leads us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Kyra. We will move on to our recognitions and awards. The following students are being recognized for their achievements, and it is great to have them here with us again. To start with Bruton High School, Mr. Schaefer will share some remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. It gives me great pleasure to introduce the Bruton High Senior of the Month for the month of September, and it is Amari Randall. Her parents are Brandon and Monique Randall. Y'all could all stand. That would be fine. Yeah. And she has her little brother Isaiah and a little sister Isla with her. Now, we are proud to celebrate Amari Randall as our September Senior of the Month. She's a compassionate leader who leads by example. Amari participates in Bruton's swimming and diving team, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, Christian Interest Group, Key Club, Mu Alpha Theta, York County Youth Commission, and Student Council Association. Amari has demonstrated her leadership of the class of 2022 by serving as class president since her freshman year. Each year, Amari received the highest honors academic award by maintaining a 4.72 grade point average. Amari enjoys praise dance, singing, crafts, and swimming. She is also a year-round swimmer with the Williamsport Aquatic Club. After high school, Amari is interested in attending Cornell or MIT to major in architectural engineering and interior design. Join me in congratulating Amari for being September Senior of the Month.
For Grafton High School, Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our Senior of the Month from Grafton High School is Sidney Haas, and I'd like to recognize her tonight, but she can't be with us tonight. She has another engagement with a sporting event, so she will be here next month, and we'll read her bio then at next month's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. For Tab High School, Mr. Myatt, would you share?
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. I'm delighted to introduce Tab High School Senior of the Month, Kayden Jacobson. I'd also like to congratulate his parents, Tim and Nicole Jacobson. Welcome. We're glad to have all of you here. Thanks for joining us this evening. Kayden is an outstanding senior. His demonstrated strength and leadership, particularly as students have returned to Tab High this school year. A four-year member of the Tab Navy Junior ROTC program, Kayden is currently serving as commanding officer, where he acted as the driving force behind organizing the unit's mini drill camp this summer. The camp successfully brought members together for the first time in many months and helped reestablish the group's identity as a unit. He also spearheaded the unit's effort to provide aid and assistance during YCSD's new teacher orientation in August. Kayden provides the best combination of ideas and action, someone who recognizes a need and then pulls everyone together to achieve specific goals. It's a great skill set. Kayden is a model student who displays a terrific attitude. He is thoughtful not only of his peers, but also his teachers. A hard worker, Kayden maintains a rigorous course load, including several advanced placement courses, while maintaining excellent grades. He is a member of the varsity baseball team and also plays on a select travel team throughout the year. Outside of school, Kayden has been very active in the Boy Scouts of America. Kayden recently completed his Board of Review, which is the final step for achieving his rank of Eagle Scout, a tremendous accomplishment. Kayden has also participated in national leadership training through the Boy Scouts, and this year is serving as a leader in the training program. Respectful, conscientious, motivated, Kayden models all the attributes we love to see in successful high school students. We are very proud to present Kayden as the Tab High School Senior of the Month. Thank you for your leadership and excellent personal example. Thank you, Kayden.
Ms. Garaltz will share about York High School Senior of the Month.
Absolutely. I'm honored to honor Carly Haskell today. Carly, would you and your family stand for us? Carly's here with her parents, Michelle and David, and also her grandfather, Wayne Guy. Carly Haskell is an outstanding and caring young woman. York High School is pleased to announce Carly Haskell as our September Senior of the Month. Carly has excelled academically throughout her time at York High School. She has received highest academic honors for the past three years and ranks in the top 5% of her class. She's a member of the National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, and Spanish National Honor Society. In 2018, Carly participated in the York County School Division Science Fair and Tidewater Science Fair, where she ranked first and second place. Carly has competed on the girls' indoor track team, outdoor track team, and cross-country team. Her teamwork and athleticism have allowed her to place at the regional and state levels numerous times. Carly has completed countless volunteer hours by serving the surrounding community and York High School. Last year, Carly and a friend raised over $22,500 through the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society Student of the Year campaign. Carly's currently the president of the Student Council Association and has previously served as class representative. She also serves as the parent-teacher, Student Association Secretary. We're beyond proud of you, Carly, and we want you to keep being the amazing Falcon that you are. Thank you very much.
For our next set of awards, the Student Service Awards, when your name is called, you can come up front. Dr. Shandor will be there. The building principal should come up as well, so we can recognize everyone together. The first one is for Seaford Elementary, Ms. Garaltz.
Absolutely. Garrett Bell, would you come join us up front? And Ms. Barbara Nagel? Got to get ready for those photo ops, Garrett. Garrett Bell is committed to serving his community. Last year as a Cub Scout, he participated in many events to include World Cleanup Day, Trash the Trash Day, and ongoing collections for local homeless shelters, senior care facilities, the Food Bank, and the Salvation Army. Garrett also took it upon himself to regularly pick up trash left on the school's basketball courts from weekend activities. It's important to him that his school is taken care of, and he believes this is everyone's responsibility. Garrett loves learning about history. It is his favorite subject. In fact, when he finishes his schoolwork, he likes to research historical battles and wars so that he can learn even more. He thinks Seaford is a great school because the teachers are nice and they make learning fun. In his spare time, he enjoys camping and playing with his dog, Sadie. Garrett is proud to belong to an Army family because you learn to appreciate all the different places in the world, and you make friends everywhere. He would like to follow in his father's footsteps by serving in the military. Garrett believes being in the military teaches you to really respect others, and it helps to keep our country safe. His advice to future Cub Scouts and other kids is to work hard, always try your best, and be patient. Don't expect to just get things right away. You have to earn it. Congratulations, Garrett.
Our next Student Service Award is for a student from Grafton High School, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you. If Sarah Ahmad would come forward, the principal? Sarah Ahmad is a lifelong learner and a leader. She is a student who is passionate about her education and fully immerses herself into any course, activity, club, or sport in which she participates. At Grafton High School, Sarah is the debate team president and has been since the ninth grade. Last year, the debate team was the Virginia State Runner-Up. Also, Sarah took first place in the Biochem category at the Tidewater Science Fair. She has been active in the Student Council Association since 10th grade and is currently the president this year as a senior. Another leadership position Sarah has taken on is serving as the co-president and co-editor-in-chief of the Grafton High School newspaper. Other noteworthy activities include participating in the York County Youth Commission and volunteering at Centerra and Riverside Hospitals. While Sarah serves her school and community, she also maintains a GPA of 4.83 and attends the Governor's School for Science and Technology studying the biological strand. She is truly an impressive clipper who stands out as someone who embodies the Student Service Award. Congratulations, Sarah. Good job.
Mr. Gavin, don't go anywhere. We're coming right back. Our next award recipient is a Community Volunteer of the Month from Grafton High School. Mr. Myatt?
Yes, I do. I have the pleasure of introducing Shirley Emerson. Mrs. Emerson has given countless hours to the Grafton Band Organization to ensure its continued success. Shirley was instrumental in assisting the band after the Grafton Complex fire. She came and spent countless hours completing an inventory of all band uniforms. And over the summer, she organized, set up, and completed fittings for over 150 band members in marching and concert uniforms. In addition, she has volunteered many days at band camp and chaperoned every time the band performs. Her positive influences have a profound effect on every member of the band and staff, and we're forever grateful. Thank you.
For our next presentation, we have the York Foundation for Public Education, and Mr. Schaefer, can you please share some comments?
Sure. Just like to say congratulations to Kyra Hagan, a second grader from Seaford Elementary School, for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's school board meeting. We would also... We would also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients, Garrett Bell from Seaford Elementary School, Sarah Ahmad from Grafton High School. We would also like, want to congratulate our Seniors of the Month, Amari Randall from Bruton High, Sidney Haas from Grafton High, who's attending an athletic event this evening, but she'll be at our October meeting, Kayden Jacobson from Tab High, and Carly Haskell from York High. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Treat are being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with our donor, Jean Fioka of Cookie Text and Edible Treat. A Walmart gift card is also being presented to each award recipient on behalf of a foundation supporter. Presenting these gifts tonight will be Kermit Ashby, York Foundation for Public Education Board Member. Congratulations.
Up next, we have our SEDEXO Leadership Recognition. Dr. Shandor, would you like to share some additional remarks?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham, and good evening, board members. For this recognition, I'm going to ask Ms. Cheryl Parr, Associate Director for School Administration, to come forward. As you are aware, our YCSD Food Service and SEDEXO staff have worked tirelessly since March of 2020 to provide access to nutritious meals for our YCSD students and families. This evening, we will recognize their efforts. Ms. Parr?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. It's a true honor this evening to come before you for a very special recognition. Since Monday, March 16th, 2020, two days after receiving word from Governor Northam that the Commonwealth schools would be closing, our YCSD Food Service and SEDEXO Nutrition Services Team has worked tirelessly to provide access to nutritious meals for all of our YCSD students. From that time through August of this year, 1,532,728 meals were served through our meal distribution This included meals for weekdays as well as weekends. In addition, this amazing team also served 312,467 in-person meals last school year for those who attended instruction in person. Our dedicated team has worked nonstop, serving meals in the light of day, the dark of night, and in all kinds of weather, all while following intricate USDA guidelines. This year, their commitment to our students continue. So far, the number of students currently serving meals has tripled for breakfast and doubled for lunch comparing to the fall of 2019. I could not be more proud of all that they have accomplished in the past year and a half. Tonight, we will ask several of our cafeteria managers to come forward to represent all of the YCSD Food Services and SEDEXO Nutrition Services Team. I will ask the audience to please hold all applause until every name has been called. Representing each cafeteria manager and cafeteria worker, we have, from the Bruton Zone, Danielle Kelly and Valerie Wilson. Please come forward, ladies, and we'll get you to remain standing up front until every person has come forward. From the Grafton Zone, Teri Cockey and Julia From the Tab Zone, Nicole Martin. From the York Zone, Zinni Parrot. Also with us this evening, we have Juliana Brown, the SEDEXO Office Manager, Amanda Fowle, the SEDEXO Operations Manager, Michelle Knotts, the SEDEXO General Manager for YCSD, and Kimberly Roman, our Manager of Food Services. And as Kim comes forward, I will also ask Mackenzie Butler to stand. She's our new SEDEXO dietitian who has recently joined Please join me now in recognizing the efforts of this most amazing team.
Thank you guys so much.
Hold on for the photo op. Thank you.
Up next, we have some introduction of new staff. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you again, Mr. Higginbotham, board members. I want to introduce and share a few comments relating to the newest additions to our YCSD leadership team. We have two people this evening that we're going to recognize. When I say your name, please stand and remain standing. So first, we're going to start off with Dr. Rob Sherlock. Rob, if you'll please stand. I should say, Bob, please stand. He's our new Associate Director of Technology and Innovation. Dr. Sherlock brings three years of experience as a district coordinator of curriculum and instruction in STEM and literacy. Before 2018, Dr. Sherlock served as a middle school principal, assistant principal, and science teacher in Saddleback Valley Unified School District in Orange County, California. We welcome Bob. Or Dr. Sherlock, thank you. And next, we have Michelle Johansson, Bruton High School Assistant Principal. Michelle, if you'll please stand, let's welcome Michelle. Michelle has served as the ACC at Yorktown Middle School since 2019. Prior to joining YCSD, Michelle served as a social studies teacher, department lead, and as a model teacher in Newport News Public Schools, where she began teaching in 2012. We welcome both of them to the leadership team in YCSD.
And we are very excited to be able to return to the Accent on Academics for our regular board meetings. Dr. Shandor, can you share some information regarding tonight's Accent on Academics?
Certainly. This month's Accent on Academics presentation is Middle School Virtual Career Fair and Expo. Last spring, over 1,200 middle school students across the school division participated in a virtual career fair. Using the division's learning management system, Canvas, students explored career clusters and visited a virtual expo hall. Much of the content for the fair was contributed by our Engaged in YCSD partners. Ms. Jennifer Rominelli, Coordinator of Career Development, will share more about the program and introduce the other presenters. Ms. Rominelli?
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. It's my pleasure to share information about the Middle School Virtual Career Fair and Expo that took place last spring. The purpose of the fair was to support the division's strategic plan goals related to career readiness. The content was designed to be interactive and visually appealing so that the student experience would be similar to that of an in-person fair. I'd like for Mrs. Warlick and the students to come up and share additional information with you.
Good evening. So to start the fair, students were given the opportunity to take an assessment for their personality and interest. So whenever they got finished taking the assessment, it gave them results, and that helped them to know where they should start looking and exploring for the career fair. And I'm going to have Nadia come up and share a little bit.
My experience while taking the interest survey was really fun. It really showed me what kinds of jobs there were and what really was for my own personality. When I got the results, it actually came up with the same things that I was thinking about doing when I grew older, which was being an athletic trainer. I got a lot of things in the medical field, which was really exciting to see.
So once they finished taking their assessments, then students were able to go and explore the career clusters and the expo hall. The career cluster section was divided into four areas that you see here. The next few slides are going to give you a little bit more of a detailed idea of what students were able to see within those different areas, and you'll be hearing from students on video and then in person.
In this area, we explored careers we were interested in.
Totally forgot about this, so it was cool to like kind of rediscover it and see what the people did there.
There are other jobs like related to computer programmers, and I found that some of those jobs might also be for me, and I found them really interesting as well.
Visual technology and film interested me a lot, which was surprising because I never really looked into that before.
At first, I was only interested in programming and software development, but I started looking at some of the other pathways, like networks, network systems, and information support and services. And I found other stuff that was also interesting.
I learned about all of the different things you could take. Some of the things that I found out, I did not even know existed, and it was very shocking, but also very interesting, which made me look into a lot of other things. In this section, these are clusters of different courses, clubs, and specialty programs.
This was the most useful part of it because it showed you like, I didn't realize you could take so many classes that helped you get to that. I thought you just didn't do it in college.
There was a lot of different things up there that I didn't know I could do in middle school. There was a bunch of different options to choose from. I'm actually in two of them, which is programming and game design, and inventions and innovations. This area has games and activities related to careers.
You basically have to find a disease, and I thought that was really interesting. And then I found a job, and it was like disease control.
I thought the games were really fun to play. I was very interested in one of the games called Cyber Incident Live. As you can see, the yellow dots on the map are botnets, and the blue dots on the map are people who deal with them. I also learned that India has a lot of cyber activity.
In this area, our Engaged in YCSD partners were able to submit videos to us, as you can see with Ms. Dudley from York County Central Purchasing Office. I'm going to turn the floor over to Ms. Garnett, and she's going to tell you a little bit about the expo
So in this area, students navigated to various company websites, and they were able to review general information, watch videos, as well as discover various job openings in the different businesses.
I looked at Riverside and Centerra's website because I wanted to see what I could look into for volunteering and also jobs for the future. I also looked at part-time jobs because as a teenager, I do want money so I can use. And both of the websites were really fun to look at. I preferred Riverside's, though, a little bit better because right when I clicked on it, all of the jobs listed there. But Centerra's, you had to look a little bit more.
So the military area also provided students with an overview of each branch, gave them general information, including videos and various jobs in the branches. But our goal here was to help students realize that military is a community that requires personnel from all of the different career clusters. So like the previous areas, the post-secondary area allowed students to navigate to the various college and university websites to review general information and programs of study. Additionally, students could view 3D virtual tours of the campuses, and we felt like this was a valuable tool since some of the students are not always able to travel to campuses in person.
In this section, there was really not many colleges that I thought would fit for me, but I asked some of my teachers about colleges they went to and things that they thought would be good. And so I looked into those. And when I got home, I actually started talking to my parents about all of the colleges that would go into the medical training and medical. And I looked at Shenandoah University and looked at online tours, and during summer, I actually went and toured around the school.
So this area provided middle school students with a glimpse at high school specialty programs, students' clubs and organizations, and work-based learning opportunities. The Student Experiences area is packed full of information, but the highlight was really the videos that were created by YCSD high school students that took part in these programs.
I just know that any kind of career that I have in the theater arts in my future is going to be entirely due to the training I received at SOE.
Medical terminology was a lot about the anatomy, which was really awesome.
I have a diploma on top of the advanced diploma you would already get. It'll give me college credit for classes.
My marketing course and my communication skills, and use that to compete with other students at other schools.
After about three or four weeks, you really get to know everybody, and everybody gets to know you, and it's a really friendly environment.
You can really see...
You can really see if that's the career path you want to take. Like for me, mentoring with Dr. Haynes has really just reassured me that this is what I want to do.
Because the opportunities that you get through the program for national recognition, for the betterment of yourself, the experiences that you have that shape you to be a better leader, to be a better person, are available to everyone in the program, and they're applicable to everyday life, whether it's as a civilian or in the military.
Overall, I thought the career fair was very helpful and fun. It was nice to explore through all the different career choices and play all the activities.
The career fair and expo hall was very beneficial for me because it really made me start looking into my future and things that I wanted to do later on in my life. It also made me start setting goals up for me in school, which would also help me get to, towards all of that.
So this concludes our presentation, and we're happy to take any questions or listen to your comments at this time.
Did students participate through a specific class, or was it all students across in every school?
I'm sorry. Come on back up.
Yep, sorry. Yes, actually, students participated in grades six through eight at, at all four schools.
So they didn't have to do it through a specific class?
It depended on the school. Each school set it, set their own schedule. We were doing this around the time of SOL, so they were coordinating with their school counseling departments at the time.
That's great, thank you.
Ms. Romanelli, will you remind everybody, how many pathways are there?
Seven, well, there's 17 career clusters, and there are multiple pathways within each cluster.
Within each cluster, yeah, several dozens. And YCSD Engage in, our business partners, what's that database look like now? How many businesses are we up to?
250 plus.
Great, thank you very much, that's great.
Yes, sir.
Great program, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I have to give a plug, I got excited to see the Virginia Tech thing there. As a Virginia Tech grad, it was nice to see those buildings again. Actually, Squire's one of the buildings I showed in the tour, that's where the, a lot of the music classes were, so I spent many hours there when I was an undergrad. But I want to thank you guys for your presentation and your, your words and your experiences here. It was really neat to have this be part of our meetings again, thank you. At this time, we will have a brief recess to greet the award recipients and for family members to take any additional pictures. Thank you very much.
We'll call our meeting back in session now. We will begin the business portion of our meeting. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to presentations. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. And this evening, Dr. Jim Carroll, our Chief Operations Officer, will present his monthly operations update. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Chairman Higginbotham, members of the board, good evening. This evening's report will be very similar to the last couple you've seen. If you'll see the locality metrics, when I reported to you two weeks ago, I said, look, it looks like the fourth wave is starting to dissipate. And then the next day, it's sharply gained for almost two weeks here. It does seem to have leveled out for the local index. So it's still better than it was, but we seem to have flattened out on our trajectory. Our local dashboard looked much better this morning. Last time I reported to you, we were at 50 positive cases. We were down to 41 this morning. But this afternoon's, I'm hearing there's some significant numbers there. I don't have those for you, but it may have raised it over the 50 that we had two weeks ago. As far as the related quarantines, that two had fallen from, I think, 141 to 122 today, but also from those resulting, from those positives that came in today, where you have a good number of quarantines. So we continue to fight that fight in using quarantine as one of our mitigation strategies. I wanted to report out the vaccination rates, those continue to improve. And I think that the numbers took a little bit of a jump. And they look a little bit better than they did last time. And I think that's because you're also having, you know, ages roll up into this, because this is a live thing. So we're having students that are becoming 12 years old, so that might have given us a little bit of bump in the 12 to 15. And of course, those 16 to 17s, it just keeps rolling. And so our first time, first dose continues to grow. And less of the 16 and 17 would be attributable to people that are in college now. So that's encouraging. And for the first time, 18 and over is now eclipsed 70%. So we have 70.7% of all adults in York County are now vaccinated. Not a lot of vaccination news, but I talked to you last time about the possibility of having a booster clinic. And for our staff, because we were awaiting news to see what the guidance was on boosters. And you probably know that they didn't feel like they had enough data to support boosters at eight months right now. I believe it's for those that are immunocompromised, it's advised. But for others, it is, they don't have that recommendation yet. So we're on hold there, and we'll just continue to monitor that situation. Also, we do not have any guidance yet from the governor's office or VDOE on whether vaccinations will be mandatory for K-12 educational staffs. So we're on hold there also. And then I'll close with the transportation update. We remain significantly understaffed. We put out a transportation advisory last week because we had an outbreak in our transportation office. And we had resulting quarantines that also further, you know, made difficulties for the people there. So we had eight of the 10 offices that run transportation out on quarantine or isolation. And that started in the last 15 days now. The first of those people returned on Friday, another one today, we get another one back tomorrow, and a couple more on Wednesday. So it's starting to repair itself. But that severely hampered our ability to back up drivers and cause some longer delays. And so that will start to improve now, but it's just a difficult go. And we are still currently analyzing all of our routes, looking for efficiencies. This is going to be a tedious activity, and we're trying to find ways to get as much efficiency out of each, out of each bus, each driver. And at the same time, trying to work for hiring people. And we did bring on a new driver last week, but we also lost one. And so now we still have four potential drivers in the hiring pipeline. But that's the difficult thing, is to try to get ahead of the curve where you're hiring more than you're losing to retirements or resignations or promotions to other jobs, that type of thing. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
One question, can you kind of explain to me the process for quarantining? In what instance would a vaccinated student have to quarantine?
Okay. A vaccinated student should not have to quarantine. There are three things that exclude you from quarantine. One would be being between three and six feet of a positive case, and you're both wearing masks. And that should happen anytime you're in one of our buildings. The second one is that you show proof of vaccination. So a parent would be notified that they are, that their student is in close contact. And you'll have to be quarantined unless you can show proof of that vaccination. Then the third one is the same thing, but for if they've had COVID in the last 90 days. So you'd need proof from a doctor that you had had COVID in that last 90-day period, that would also excuse you. So those are the three things that get you out of a close contact quarantine.
Right, and the expectation is that this process is a standard process that's across all schools, all nurses? Because the nurse is the one that's doing that contact tracing at the school level and making that contact?
Well, it's a partnership between the schools, and we have staff in the county office. And we try to be as consistent as we can. Of course, there could be mistakes. We're dealing with a lot of these cases, and it's a lot of work. And if for any reason we thought we had a case that was misread or, you know, handled improperly, then certainly you could give us a call, and we can take a second look and make sure that the student is treated the right, the right way.
And those, and that contact tracing is interwoven between schools, so that sibling groups, that contact tracing would happen automatically then?
Yes, because it's not just in that school. It's also things that happen outside of school. In fact, a majority of cases are community-based. And if you looked, if you look at our COVID dashboard, we delineate between community-based exposure and school-based exposure. And I think it's, it's like 1,300 to 1,000, I think, is the ratio, so 13 to 10. So it's a majority of cases are community-based. And so, you know, we're contact tracing sporting teams, like travel ball, birthday parties, bridal showers. I mean, you name it, we've had to contact trace it. And so those lines go everywhere. And then when you have things like siblings, were the siblings both exposed to the positive case? So sometimes we'll have people that are concerned about a sibling not being, one sibling is exposed to a positive case, and they're concerned about the other sibling. A con, a close contact of a close contact is not quarantine. It's those people that are in close contact with a positive.
Or with symptoms, correct?
Positive, no, just positive.
Oh, okay, okay. And then on transportation, I know that's the big hot button in the community. And I just want to say thank you for the communication that's going out. I think it's been very, very concise and clear, and just explained to people what's going on and what we're doing to address it. So obviously, we want to keep that communication up, but thank you for the communication that's been going on.
And I'd really like to thank some people on our team that have really jumped in and really helped. Catherine Goff, Bonnie Gray has done a great job. She was in there today dispatching, I was in there helping her. We have Ken Harris, who is new to dispatch with us, and Cheryl Parr. Cheryl Parr, which you see her. They've all thrown in, there have been other people that have jumped in. And a lot of our executive leadership team that have jumped in, driven vans. And it's been a team effort to try, especially to get us through this tough period, last 15 days.
Yes, thank you very much.
Let me just ask, if there's a situation where a parent, a parent had a student who rode the bus in previous years, and maybe now is being driven to school, and they want to just make sure, as we're looking at combining the routes, is there someone they should call to remove that student from the bus route if they're going to be driven the remainder of the year?
Yes, either way, if you want to be added to a bus, or you want to be taken off of a bus, all you have to do is call that school and give that direction, and then we make a change in the computer, and that should take care of it.
Okay.
Jim, I remember on the first day of school, and we were at Queens Lake, and had some traffic snarl-ups. And they were, from what I understand, getting much better now. We're getting better at, the parents are getting better at dropping off their kids. And we're getting better at directing things, right?
Right, that, that happens every year. Of course, the traffic's a little more volume this year, but that, that's always the case. New, new people coming to the school, not knowing the processes, the school may have, you know, tweaked their processes. And just getting people ready to go. So there's the new people, and then you've got to remember that we had a lot of students that hadn't been at a new school for the last year and a half, so that further exacerbated it. But yeah, everything's going pretty smooth today. And I'd also like to thank Seaford Baptist Church. We've had a lot of backups on Seaford, not just this year, but probably close to a couple decades. And we reached out to ask them to partner with us, and they've been extremely gracious. So we are now queuing the Seaford arrival and dismissal through their very large driveway. And that opens Seaford Road up. And so we shouldn't see much delay at all on Seaford Road anymore. And that helps our buses get in there quicker. So you should see a much improved situation in the Seaford area.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll.
As we move on to public participation at board meetings, I would like to open it up for public comments, but I'm going to share a few remarks. The school board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to the business of the school board. The school board expects that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. We ask that speakers address their comments to the entire school board and not one individual board member, superintendent, staff member, or audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium. Each speaker may speak up to three minutes. A timer is visible to speakers from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. The timer will not begin until after you state your name and address. We are providing individual sign-up sheets and pens for each speaker, and we ask that you speak loudly, as a safety shield may muffle your voice. I now open the public participation for comments of citizens. Our first speaker is Rebecca Wallace. If you can please state your name and address, and then we'll start the timer.
Rebecca Wallace, 100 Leyden Way, Yorktown, Virginia. I just wanted to, I felt led to speak on some of the comments that I've heard over the past month or so regarding the nondiscrimination policy. And I wanted to speak tonight on parental responsibility for how their children react to this policy. The policy that is required to be adopted to ensure the well-being of thousands of students across the state who don't identify with the gender they were assigned at birth, and who report higher rates of bullying, mental health issues than their peers. Our children are very aware of the world around them, and through social media, and what's going on in society. My main point is that how we react as parents is going to pave the way for how our children react. Learning to be with others who are different from what your particular family unit is, is essential for survival in the world. And children deal with people who have different religions, cultures, skin colors, sexual orientations, and different genders just about every day. The way the parents react is what's going to make the difference as to whether this becomes just a big mess. My youngest child went to school with a little girl whose family was Jehovah's Witness. Every time there was a party in class, her mother would remove her from class, and my daughter asked about this. We are Christian, and we have different beliefs from the Jehovah's Witnesses. I explained to her that this little girl's family had different beliefs than us. I explained to the best of my ability what they were. And my daughter's response was, oh, okay. My response did not mean that my child was being indoctrinated to become a different religion. I simply explained that we all have differences in beliefs, which is what our country's built upon. I picked up the paper Friday morning and read an article about a Virginia Tech football player who went into a young person's apartment to find out if this person was transgender. He then proceeded to beat this person to death, including breaking all of his facial bones and teeth out of his face. Where is your child going to fall on the scale of, oh, okay, to beating up a kid? And it's all how the parents react. It is okay to say to your kids that your family's beliefs are one way or the other. What is not okay is to foster hatred, intolerance, violence against people who are different from your family unit. In my Bible, I see Jesus saying to show compassion, love, mercy, and kindness. Having compassion, love, mercy, and kindness does not mean your child is going to become transgender. It's ludicrous to say that our children are in danger from transgender children. Transgender children, however, are in great danger of murder at a higher rate from cisgendered people. For the record, I'm white, Christian, and I've raised three heterosexual children. I may not understand what it feels like to be transgender, I may not understand it at all. But I do know my friend Caitlin, who spoke here a few weeks ago. I know her to be a kind person. She's super intelligent, has a strong work ethic, and is a very interesting person to talk to, and she loves her cat. I see no reason to ignore her rights, simply because she's different from me. Picture how you'll react if your child comes out to you in the future, and imagine fearing for your child reactions like the ones many parents have voiced today. Thank you all.
Our next speaker is Mary Ellen Dixon. If you can please state your name and address, and the timer will begin after that.
You guys don't have it memorized yet? I'm Mary Ellen Dixon, 102 North Crescent, Lakeland Crescent, that's what it is, Yorktown. I'll start off with, I, I understand data gathering, I do that. But we're only gathering data just on the virus. We're not gathering the data on the health crisis outside the virus. We have a health crisis in that the vaccines themselves are causing harm to some individuals. We have more vaccine-related injuries and deaths in the military than we do from COVID. The total military count for all COVID deaths is 20. You can see a Navy surgeon turn around and tell how many deaths and how many injuries we have to our service members receiving the vaccine. So I would like you to include the results. How many of our students, how many of our staff, have we had any vaccine-related? I never get answers. I send writing, put it in writing, I talk here, where are the answers coming from? We ask questions, we get no answers. That's one. Now, VDAH, the guidance, is, quarantine guidance is not what you guys are following. The quarantine guidance is that if both individuals, vaccinated and unvaccinated, are both masked, there is no quarantine requirement. You can reach Tim Anderson, the attorney down in Virginia Beach, he will tell you that. He will tell you exactly where to find it, and he's representing schools, and he's representing parents. I can send that to you afterwards. Some of the bad assumptions we're making is that the vaccinated people aren't passing the COVID. That's not true. My sister-in-law, who is a surgical nurse, was patient zero and passed it to all the rest of my family on a vacation. So you not doing a test on vaccinated people, or quarantining vaccinated people to see if they are passing the COVID, you're missing an opportunity. Vaccine, also the tester, 75% false positives. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. I'd also like to know where we find the information as far as our, the, your surveys. Survey results, we turn around and answer surveys as parents, but we never see the results. I'd like to know where that information is. And then, why, why are you guys hiding the votes now? It seemed like last time you had votes underneath the machine, underneath the table. Are the votes going to be recorded, that we know who voted for what? And just again, why aren't questions being answered, whether written, or they're spoken orally here in board meetings? There should be a process that you answer the questions. That's all I got.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dixon. Our next speaker is Carol Bauer. If you can please state your name and address, and the timer will start.
Good evening, school board members. Dr. Shandor and the members of the community, my name is Carol Bauer. I reside at 314 Brook Lane. I am wearing my ESP Respect shirt tonight. ESP is shorthand for the Educational Support Personnel, the custodians, bus drivers, pair educators, cafeteria workers, and clerical staff, who help all of our students be successful. I'm here speaking for those extra special people, who without them would not be able to give the services that we give our students. We have heard of the shortages this year, but in reality, these shortages for bus drivers, for custodians, have been here before COVID. Compensation is a huge part of attracting and retaining qualified staff. It's true that you cannot support a family on their current salaries. I appreciate the efforts, but there is still more work to be done. But even more, as we continue to ask those ESPs to do dangerous work and put themselves at risk, one way we can actually help protect our staff is to offer COVID testing. This testing is being offered to school divisions at no charge. YCSD needs merely to opt into the free program offered through the state. I shared this information earlier with senior staff, and they were not planning to participate. However, tonight, I've heard in conversations that YCSD will be opting in, and I, along with the ESPs and educators, appreciate this step towards safer working environment. Additionally, when staff must quarantine, or they do test positive for COVID, leave should not be taken from their staff's sick leave. It is stated a YCSD mitigation policy and strategy, so I ask your support in helping staff and helping keep YCSD staff.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Delilah Johnson.
Delilah Johnson, 216 Ashton Drive, Yorktown, Virginia. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Shandor, fellow York County residents. We're continuing to battle the pandemic as we started this school year, and educators have been asked to do more than ever before. Yet, some people in our community fail to recognize the stringent standards that have been set by the Virginia Department of Education and local counties that must be met to become a highly qualified and certified teacher. So tonight, as a passionate educator, I feel compelled to share with you and the community those requirements. All licensed staff must have a four-year bachelor's degree from an accredited university. But many YCSD employees continue their education past a bachelor's degree. 51.1% of York County teachers hold a master's degree, that's three years more. In addition to college degrees, teachers must also take and pass praxis exams, which include a general exam and a content exam in their endorsement or subject area, just like El Sat and GM Tab, sorry, GMAT. Teachers will not be able to complete their licenses and schooling without passing these exams. Furthermore, each year, teachers attend countless professional development training outside our normal working hours during the summer without pay and on our dime. We are dedicated professionals. Many times, the issue of substitutes has come to address the teacher shortages. It is not that simple. Certified endorsed teachers make every single lesson plan, copies, preparations for the subs. If subs are filling long-term positions, the lesson planning jobs falls to the lead teacher in the department or other teachers to compile and put together all lessons for the classes. The solution to teacher shortages is not hiring long-term subs to fill classrooms. Although we appreciate them, and many of them are working their way to become teachers themselves, this is not the right strategy for a long-term solution. Other attempts to hire teachers include competing with our adjacent communities for the same personnel. This new, this year, new hires were given full steps, while current teachers were held frozen on the same step that were on the beginning of the 1920 school year, even after all work YCSD teachers have done to help students in our community through the chaotic last year, 2021 school year. YCSD teachers are now five steps below their earned steps. Next year, that will not work. Other school divisions are also hiring and recognizing the experience that teachers bring with them. The solution is retention. Treat your teachers as professional and pay their earned steps. Foster good environments on all schools, respect their plannings. As teachers, we love our professional, our professions, because we love our students. Retention should be at the forefront of your long-term solution. And compensation is a key part of that retention.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Linda Fairman. If you can state your name and address, and the timer will start after that.
Linda Fairman, 111 Galaxy Way, Yorktown. At the last school board meeting, I witnessed Superintendent Shandor and staff say concerns over forcing gender preference ideology were non-issue since YCSD was already handling student concerns about this on a case-by-case basis, and it's not forced on the student body as a whole. When it was asked again, they assured this would be handled only for individual students, as it already had been done for several years. Well, the first day of school proved that was a bold lie, and parents do have a right to be concerned about this apparent division-wide push of gender fluid indoctrination instead of academic education. Parents reported that the transgender book, Jacob's New Dress, was read to fifth graders, that's nine and 10-year-old children, at Coventry Elementary School, followed by a discussion of what pronouns each student wanted to use, and whether to let others know of their choice. When a York County supervisor investigated, school administrators claimed it was merely a choice by an individual teacher for a lesson against bullying. Sorry, but anti-bullying lessons teach kindness and understanding, not questioning a child's pronoun choice in a group of peers, asking whether to keep it from parents, and then asking probing questions about the student's family traditions, values, and habits. A TAB middle school parent received a copy of a classroom introduction handout, asking students what pronouns they wanted to use, and if it was okay for them to use in front of parents, staff, and friends. When the school was questioned, that parent was told she received that copy by mistake, as that wasn't what was given to the students. This begs the question, why was that pronoun choice version even in existence in school files and so easily sent to that parent? This doesn't end here. Several York High students have stated that all of their teachers asked what pronouns each student wanted to use, to the point that one student said it was uncomfortable and annoying by the end of the day, that this and annoying by the end of the day, that this was each teacher's focus rather than the academic subject. Why weren't parents informed of this before school started and given an opt-out form for their children? While this is only three schools, it's what I've personally heard. I wonder where else. And it proves our concerns are justified and highlights that YCSD staff has hidden the truth and cannot be trusted to reveal the whole truth when asked. What else is happening that was denied and isn't being revealed? What surveys are students completing? What other books on this sensitive subject are being used in the classroom or in the library? Are teachers psychoanalyzing students for trauma-informed practices? It's time for you to do your own research and investigation, rather than hoping school staff will be open and honest when questioned. They've proven otherwise. It's time for you to grow a spine like the Stafford Board of Supervisors and protect our students from indoctrination. It's time for you to do your elected job and focus on real academic education.
Thank you, Ms. Fairman. Those are all the speakers. We have signed up. Is there anyone else who wished to speak to the school board today? All right, I now close public participation for the comments of citizens. And we'll move on to matters by board members. Mr. Richardson, would you like to begin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would. I've sat idly by here for a long time now, and I haven't said a whole lot, but tonight I'm going to say a lot. I've listened to a lot of misinformation from individuals, from board members on Board of Supervisors, and the two boards have enjoyed a great relationship over the past few years. We've gotten along well, at least I thought so. Mr. Zeremba, you're correct. You're not making friends or influencing people with your misguided information. I won't let you drive a wedge between our two boards. Both boards have worked hard and long with our school superintendent and the county administrator to bring our boards closer together. I do meet with my counterpart, as you asked other board members to meet at your last meeting with their counterparts. I did so with Jeff Wassmer, and I continue to do so with Mr. Roan. I'll actually be meeting with him again next week. We keep our communication lines open between the two boards, at least me and Mr. Roan do, and I know other board members do as well. Mr. Zeremba, you've asked and been told time and time again that YCSD does not teach critical race theory. I don't know what he doesn't understand, and I challenge him to find a course or show an example of it. Some examples were shown tonight about Jacob's New Dress. We've explained that. A brand-new teacher, I mean, it happens. We're probably our own worst enemy when we do things like that, but it happens. And it was to teach bullying, not to teach transgender, because we don't teach that. I don't know what he doesn't understand, and I challenge him to find a course or show an example of it. And also, Mr. Zeremba, we did not spend $2.1 million to teach our teachers to be counselors or psychologists. We did spend funds on a program called Cognito. Cognito's preschool to 12th grade simulations are designed to support our school division staff in recognizing and providing initial support to students who may be experiencing a crisis and to provide early intervention to students in distress. One of our most recent federal grants after that, after we started this training, that we applied for, we conducted a survey as part of that grant to ask parents, our constituents, to rank what they wanted to see the grant money spent on. And a lot of these parents wanted to see the money going towards social, emotional well-being of our school, of our children in our schools. So, Mr. Zeremba, what are you advocating? We don't support the students who may be experiencing crisis and not provide early intervention to students in distress? A student's distress may be impacting their ability to focus on academics or engage in other social or school-related activities. Cognito uses role-playing conversations with virtual health simulations to increase staff's comfort level and competency to engage in initial conversations with these students. Mr. Zeremba, I asked you again, are you saying we should not train our staff to identify our students who may be in crisis? Early intervention may include contacting the building administrator, school counselor, a social worker, or a school psychologist in order to better support the health and learning and well-being and averting a crisis situation. Mr. Zeremba, what say you? You posted that on a social media page once. What say you? Are you saying we should not be trying to avoid crisis situations with our students in our schools? And I'm just using this as one example of misrepresentation and miscommunication. Mr. Zeremba, you are way off-base. $2.1 million was not spent on this training. The current budget for Cognito training is about $110,000, and there were no local, state, or other federal funds dedicated to Cognito. I've watched the video from the meeting, and there are several items that were misrepresented. Again, Cognito's preschool to 12th grade simulations are designed to support our school division staff in recognizing and providing initial support of students who may be experiencing crisis and to provide early intervention to those students in distress. That's no more than what our police officers are doing right now, and even our deputies in York County are trained the same thing. Are they school psychologists? Are they considered psychologists, or, or, um, are they now counselors because of that training they get? The Board of Supervisors last week, after your meeting, was requested and was provided the summary of the CARES Act, ESER, and CRF stimulus funding, which is coronavirus relief funding, by the way. The current budget for Cognito training, again, was $110,000, just under that. There's a printable version that's on our YCSD ESER III Plan and on our YCSD website, if you'd like to see it. What the heck's going on, Mr. Zeremba? I'm up, I'm done, I'm fed up to here with it. Schools have been teaching SEL, social-emotional learning, for over 20 years, probably longer than that. It teaches about things like bullying and conflict resolution. The ESER Plan is posted on the division website and was presented to this board with full transparency in August. Please note in Section 4, Other Use of Funds, which denotes 12 different areas that the $2.1 million will address. Mr. Zeremba, I've lived in New York County for over 50 years. I've served this community in many of those years, and I've never seen since flamboyant and misinformation being spread around. I'm not sure you picking up the phone to ask a question would help, because emails have been sent to you explaining much of this, and you still don't understand. You mentioned that, once, that you brought up these issues at Board of Supervisors meeting, and all you hear is crickets. Well, maybe, Mr. Zeremba, that's because no one agrees with you. Your counterpart you referred to was a she. Mine won't meet with me for lunch, but you should meet with your counterparts in your districts. Well, Mr. Zeremba, that's not even your counterpart in your district. Your counterpart is Mr. Schaefer here in District 1. The person you're referring to was our vice chair that was trying to reach out to you to explain some things. You don't even know who your counterpart is. And your counterpart's a male that you berated and bullied and demeaned with comments that you made on social media. And you even mentioned in a post about the Board of Supervisors providing the largest chunk of our budget, the school division budget. That's true, that's always been the case. That's the case in most jurisdictions in Virginia and probably across the country. So are you suggesting cutting the school board budget? Are you serious? If so, our citizens should be extremely concerned about you, Mr. Zeremba. One speaker said most of our teachers were leaving because of critical race theory, transgender policy, and social-emotional learning. That's not true. I have to agree with our superintendent, he said it best. He had seven years serving this division, and I've served the school division for five now, and have lived in the community for over 50 years, serving this community during many of those years. The York County School Division has earned the public's trust in those years, and I find it extremely demeaning, demoralizing to our hard-working, professional staff, teachers, and administrators, and support staff, that accusations made by a couple of misinformed individuals are given credence by our elected officials who have an open line of communication to those who can provide accurate and factual information on these topics. Please use it. And since we're pointing fingers at each other, why stop here, Mr. Zeremba? You sponsored a person to be a member of the Planning Commission on the Board of Supervisors. A longtime standing policy of the Board of Supervisors was the only point a member who's a citizen or at least a registered voter to those commissions. But this person you advocated for is not a U.S. citizen and not a registered voter. This begs the question, is there a particular reason for this? Do you, or do you have something to gain from this person being on the Planning Commission? They serve as an advisory to the Board of Supervisors regarding planning and development in York County. They develop a comprehensive plan and provide recommendations to the Board of Supervisors on use permits, the reclassification of property, proposed amendments to development ordinances or policies, and any other community development issue. Again, I'm sorry for the long rant, Mr. Chair, but I'd had it, and I needed to say this, but I'm laying this to rest, and I don't need to speak about it any longer. And I don't plan to speak on it again. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Next, Mr. Schaefer.
I probably won't be quite as emotional, or, or as long as Jimmy, but I do appreciate your, your view, and, and I second you, and I thank you for those comments, and I don't think that we need to repeat them again. But what I will tell you about is some of the things that are happening up in the Bruton Zone. We've had, I was able to go to the, each one of the open houses, except for Bruton's, and it was a magnificent time, it really was, seeing all the parents and, and all the kids and the excitement that came up. And then I was at all four schools during the first day of school, and it was, it was just great. It was, it felt like normalcy again. Even when kids were in masks and everything, it was still normal, because the kids were happy to be there. And I will tell you that, that our teachers are working extremely hard, and we have the best teachers in the state. They are dedicated, just like you said. They are professional, and they care more about the kids than any group that I've ever seen. And so I would like to say that I appreciate and I applaud all our school staff, especially the teachers, the parents, the ones that are in the front lines dealing with the kids, bringing back, ushering in a new normalcy that the children can actually learn. And we are not going to be sidestepped by any more of these arguments such as CRT and all that other stuff, because it's not happening. And I appreciate our leadership, I appreciate this board, and I just thank the school division. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Ms. Garalt?
Sure. Mr. Richardson, I also appreciate your comments, and I know I was feeling the same level of frustration the past couple meetings that I was watching with the Board of Supervisors. And honestly, I encourage everybody to use the open line of communication instead of social media. That is never the avenue to go. So, thank you, I appreciate that. I just want to say thank you to everybody who's working so hard, the bus drivers that are doing double duty. I know we have a lot of school board office staff that's jumping in and doing other duties as assigned. I know everybody's working extra hard, and we're all exhausted, but I do appreciate everything you're doing. I think a lot of our schools are working extra hard to bring a lot of activities for our kids. And we've got Spirit Week this week at York High School and York Middle, trying to do as much as they can to make sure these kids are having a positive experience, an experience that they, is reminiscent of pre-pandemic. So it's been great to watch a lot of that, again, be posted by parents, kids in their decade outfit and everything. So I appreciate that. I encourage the community to go out to the homecoming game this Friday and to the parade, because, again, a lot of that is pre-pandemic stuff that they've worked really hard to bring back. I was able to do a secret ninja senior sign delivery today to our seniors of the month, and that was really fun. I had dogs that were freaking out, but I was able to stick those signs in the yards and wave to some Ring doorbells, so parents, you should probably check those. I hope I made a fool of myself, it would be great. This week, last week, I attended a legislative conference with Mr. Richardson. That was the first time they've ever done a hybrid conference, so we had little quirks that we had to work out at the beginning as far as sound, but it was great to hear some of the things that are before our legislators in Virginia, and just to kind of get a heads-up on those, so that we can stay as informed as possible. One of the things that struck me was that school boards across, not only Virginia, but across the country, are dealing with some of the things that we're dealing with, the school divisions are dealing with. And, again, we used to have meetings for school board where nobody attended and nobody watched, and that isn't the case anymore. Our new normal is that, again, these are shared, these are watched. While that can be a good thing, I just want to make sure that we're still, you know, staying as civil and as respectful as we can, because it just shows our hard-working staff how much we appreciate them. This week, I'll be attending the Special Education Advisory Council meeting, so it'll be nice to have that back in person. And I think they're actually going to try to do a hybrid, and so that folks that aren't comfortable coming in person to that meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 PM are able to still log in. I know that last year with the virtual, we had more attendance than we'd ever had, so I think that they're really trying to have that hybrid. And then I'll also be going to a York Elementary School PTA meeting next week as well, just to kind of answer questions for folks and get to know some people. So, again, pieces of normalcy are coming back, and I'm grateful for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garalt. Mr. Myatt?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank Mr. Richardson for his comments and the additional detail. We're all seeking the same thing, you know, consistency, clarity, transparency, and that's, frankly, where I'm going to focus my comments. You know, the primary role of a high-functioning school board is to build and maintain bridges with our partners and external stakeholders, particularly the Board of Supervisors. And it's essential that we do that and that we be consistent. And I'd also like to extend my thanks personally to the District 5 Representative, Mr. Tom Shepherd. Tom and I routinely exchange information and continue to engage and discuss matters affecting the schools and the community. Tom is always seeking ways to remain informed, he's curious, and it's always constructive, it's always appropriate, and it's always substantial, and I'm greatly thankful for that. High-functioning boards and organizations find ways to operate to the satisfaction of both parties, and focusing attention on constructive means for improving our schools and the community. And, again, thanks very much, Tom, for your service, and, again, your partnership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myatt. I don't know how much more I can add to it, other than saying I had, I had sent an email back a while ago about some of my concerns, and I received one email back that made it clear that there was going to be no real further discussion and being open to listening to other ideas and thoughts and point of views, so I just sort of left it, because I wasn't going to argue to someone with deaf ears. But I do want to say that I think it's clear in the school division and in the schools that there's not a single person in the school who's doing what they thought they would be doing in the school, from student to staff, to the teachers, administrators, custodians, bus drivers, anybody's doing something totally different than what they were expecting. And this is going back, you know, a year and a half, when, when COVID first became an issue with being able to hold in-school classes. And I just want to thank everybody, from the students to all the adults in the buildings, for doing what needs to be done to create an environment where students can be safe and comfortable, and they can have a great learning environment, and they can continue to build their own education so that they can grow and make contributions to the society when they grow up and they leave York County. And I just want to thank everyone, the teachers, the administrators, parents, students, and everything, for, for all they've done. And we're a month into school now, and habits are starting to form and everything, and everyone's getting, you know, in, in the routines. And we just keep pushing, keep pushing forward through those routines as we go, and celebrate in our successes that are to come. So that's all I have to, for my board matters, and so we'll go ahead and close that for this meeting, and we'll move right on to financial matters. I believe, Mr. Schaefer, you have financial matters this month?
The exciting part of the meeting. Here we are, this is, we're doing a consideration of approval of claims certified for payment. The big expenses for August were totaling approximately $1,252,000. Of that $1,200,000 was for tuition for governor of school and career, career and tech ed. We had WHRO annual membership of $36,729, and then payment to IT totaled $484,000, and the big chunk of that was for, to VirtuCom, for $277,800 for warranty service on devices, $59,000 for frontline technologies for substitute management system, and Blackboard, $37,900 for parent notification system. Payments for operations totaled $45,410, and the big one there was Republic Service, $21,000 for waste pickup. Payments related to administration totaled $94,700, and were payments to CHKD, which was $63,500 for athletic training services. And then, payments related to construction and maintenance projects totaled $497,425. A big chunk of that went to Centennial Contractors of $405,000 for TAB Middle School and York Middle School gym floors. That's a good thing. And then we had RMM Architects, $52,200 for design work at Seaford Elementary. There we go. For August revenues, federal revenue for August increased $211,000 when compared to last year due to Impact Aid payments. For expenditures, expenditures for instruction, transportation, operations, and administration in health increased significantly in August 2021 when compared to last year. This was a result of shifting 10-month employee pay schedule from September to August to August to July. Okay? Significant changes to the food service budget, the, in August 20- The, in August 2021, federal revenue service is down by more than $146,000, because revenue for 2021 was not received until September. Food service expenditures for August 2021 have decreased $120,925 when compared to last year, because insufficient inventories were on hand to start the year. And consideration of approval of Resolution 21-39, a resolution authorizing a specific procurement, is for more than $50,000. We were going to go to CDW for 300 Chromebook tablets totaling $89,859. Mr. Chairman, I now move to approve financial matters as listed.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ford, we have a motion to approve financial matters, and a second. You may pull the board.
Yes, we have a motion by Mr. Schaefer and second by Mr. Richardson to approve financial matters. The vote passed 5 to 0. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer, for sharing the financial matters. Next, our consent calendar. I will go over this briefly. All board members have had the opportunity to go over all the items on this and ask questions and to review it. But on our list this month is approval of personnel actions, the approval of donations in the amount of $1,500, approval of minutes from a regular meeting on August 23, 2021, and a work session on September 13, 2021, approval of revisions to the 2018 to 2022 local plan for gifted education, and the approval of consent calendar as listed. So do we have a motion to approve our consent calendar as listed?
I move we approve the consent calendar as listed.
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Ford, we have a motion to approve the consent calendar, and a second. You may pull the board.
Yes, the motion's made by Mrs. Garaltz and second by Mr. Schaefer to approve the consent calendar as listed. Board members, you may cast your vote. Thank you. The board passed the vote, 5 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe there's a question earlier about the results of the voting, when we vote on motions and things like that. All of the results are posted in the minutes that we approve. So, for instance, those two meetings that we just approved, those minutes for, all of the votes will be there. When we don't do it on the computer, that is usually when a motion comes up that was not pre-planned, or we make an amendment to another motion as we bring that up.
There's a technology.
Or there's a technology concern, yeah.
Yeah.
It always happens to be.
All right, so we move on to our action items. First action item is approval of a proclamation for Bullying Prevention Awareness Month for October of 2021. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Over 20% of the youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or as a victim. It's important for parents, students, teachers, coaches, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of this problem as a school community. Let the month of October 2021 be recognized as Bullying Prevention Month, with the intention that the issue of bullying and its prevention be discussed in all York County schools during this time. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are in need of a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for Bullying Prevention Awareness Month, October 2021.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the proclamation for Bullying Prevention Month.
And a second?
Second.
Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second. You may pull the board.
Yes, the motion's made by Mr. Myatt and second by Mrs. Garaltz to approve the proclamation for Bullying Prevention Month. Board members, you may cast your vote. Thank you. Passed 5 to 0.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Moving on to policy. For discussion, we have none, and first reading, we have none. We do have a second reading of the consideration of approval of the second reading of the Policy Section JB, equal educational opportunities, non-discrimination of the York County School Board policy. Dr. Shandor, are there any further comments?
There are no further comments from staff. We've had an opening discussion. We had a discussion at our work session, but there are no changes since those last meetings. Thank you.
Are there any questions from any board members?
I have none.
Okay, then we are in need of a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Policy Section JB, equal educational opportunities, non-discrimination of the York County School Board policy.
I move we approve the second reading of Policy Section JB, equal educational opportunities, non-discrimination of the York County School Board.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second. You may pull the board.
Yes, a motion's made by Mrs. Garaltz and second by Mr. Myatt to approve Policy Section JB. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed 5 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next up, we have consideration of approval of a second reading of Policy Section JO, student records of the York County School Board policy. Dr. Shandor, are there any further comments?
Yes, Mr. Higginbotham, there are no further questions or comments from staff.
Any questions from the board? So we are in need of a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Policy JO, student records of the York County School Board policy.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the second reading of Policy JO, student records. Move approval.
And second?
I'll second.
Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second. You may pull the board.
Yes, a motion's made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the second reading of Policy Section JO. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed 5 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next on our agenda is a report from the superintendent, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Board members, I will be brief this evening, just with three quick items. First, as Dr. Carroll mentioned earlier, we've had eight of our 10 staff members in the transportation office who are out. Again, I want to commend Ken, and what is Ken's last name, guys?
Harris.
Thank you. Ken Harris. Bonnie Gray, who works with the foundation and SBO, has been a huge player to help us continue moving transportation. Cheryl Parr, who does a lot in this school division, as many of you know. Catherine Goff, who also does a lot in this division, who's helped with transportation. But I don't want to leave out Dr. Elaine Gould, Mr. Bowen, Christina Head, and there are several other members of our staff members, several other members of our team who've gone to transportation to either ride a van, drive a van, serving as an assistant. So I think it's just a great example of just, you know, everyone chips in when we need each other for the team. I also want to commend our bus drivers. They're doing a fantastic job despite being shorthanded. I've talked to several of them outside the office, outside the transportation office last week and said, "Guys, we're not going to focus our attention on minutes and time. We're going to focus our attention on safety and making sure we get our students doing from school in a safe fashion." And we have a number of strategies that Dr. Carroll's working on with Mr. Hargrove, Mr. Bowen, and Dr. Vlad, and myself, so we're hoping to continue to make strides in that area. Again, as we move through the school year, we will continue to evaluate and make necessary adjustments. That may be to transportation, that may be to instruction, it may be to a number of different items. This is a difficult time to lead a school division or run a school. I think our principals and assistant principals have done a fantastic job kicking this year off, and we're only in week four, five, somewhere in there, but I just have to commend their efforts and their work. The teachers are doing a great job. Our administrators are observing classrooms and, you know, providing feedback to our teachers. There's nothing better than walking into the school and seeing kids working together and collaborating and working on projects together, and also going to athletic events, you know, to bring back the spirit of the school. So we've certainly enjoyed that. But, again, there may be a time in the school year where we may have to adjust and pivot at some point, and we'll make sure that we send out our communications accordingly. But I will say, we're not perfect. We're going to make some mistakes. There's going to be typos in what we send out sometimes, and buses are going to be late, and, you know, we may make some mistakes, but we're all human. But what I will say is our staff bring their best self to work every single day and do the best that they can. And if they make mistakes, we're going to continue to support them and continue to work with them. Again, want to thank everyone in the school division, every single staff member, for all they've done to get us started with the school year, and their efforts are certainly appreciated, I know by myself and all of our executive members of our team, but I know you guys appreciate them as well. This concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I want to thank all the YCSD staff who are here, and all of the parents and the seniors of the month, the Student Service Award members, the community volunteers that we recognize, everyone coming out, the speakers who came out to speak for a public comment. It was nice to have, back to our regular meetings again, with everyone being able to be recognized, have the opportunity to speak with us, and it was just nice to be back fairly normal for it, and we look forward to it in the future. Our next work session will be held on Monday, October 11, right here in York Hall, but we are in need of a closed session, so could a board member make a motion to take us into a closed session relating to personnel matters?
Sure.
I move that the York County School Board convene a closed session to discuss personnel matters relating to specific employees pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
I'll second.
Can I real quick give you an ad hoc? Because...
I'm sorry, ma'am. You've already had your three minutes to speak to the board.
We'll come speak to you after the...
I'll come offline, Mary. I'll come down.
We'll come speak to you as soon as we're done. I'm sorry, ma'am. Okay. I'm sorry. Who was the...
I'll second.
Ms. Garaltz made the motion, and Mr. Schaefer seconded.
Yes, thank you. A motion was made by Mrs. Garaltz, seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Board members, you may cast your vote to go into closed session. The motion passed 5 to 0. Thank you. You're now in closed session.
Have a great week, everyone. We're now in closed session.[1766.47][1766.47]